Going to recess for two hours and then we'll come back into service, okay?
April 4th.
April 4th.
Yeah!
I get two good looks, thank you very much. Now we'll continue on. We have right now an ANR from Maple Lane Development Corporation on Old Westbrook Field Road and River Bend Road. Is there a representative present?
Yes.
Good evening, sir, how are you? For the record, you are?
Hi, Jim.
You are, sir? Your name?
I'm Nolan Blake.
Nolan Blake, very good, sir. Mr. Blake, what are you going to present to the board and people present this evening?
These lots were previously laid out, but they were only 30,000 square feet. So we changed them to the current joint bylaws. So instead of eight, we have six.
Six lots, sir?
Six lots.
Going from eight to six?
There's six, yes.
Okay. You are the owner of the lots?
Yes.
Very good. If you could, please, we need a copy of the, a couple copies. You have the two, the form A right there that I'm going to, Kathy's up. That's the town form. We'd like to take a look at it and then explain to the board. You made a comment a moment ago that in the past these were laid out. How long ago was that?
Oh, I don't know, maybe 30 years ago.
Okay, well, glad to see you back here.
Well, I didn't lay them out, someone else lays them out. They're not the plans that I was talking about.
Take these over there, you want, Sue, if you would. This is on Old Westbrook Field Road and River Bend Road, folks. If you would, just explain from left to right or right to left.
These two lots are not included. You just put these on there to show where it was.
To the right-hand side, guys. Those, one has a dotted line in between it, not a solid line. Those two are excluded.
There are houses built on those.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so there's six lots here. They all are excess of the 45,000 square feet.
If everybody will look, you got it from left to right, 45, 45, 52, 50, going all the way down. They're being broken out, so now that they all are approximately equal sized than what they were in the past. Very good. Questions by anybody? Bob, you're looking at it, Sue and Melissa?
No, sir, seems straightforward. Man's got six nice-looking lots here.
The first one taped is off, but that's fine in the storm, that's fine. They all have enough square footage, Sue?
Yes.
Yes? Yep? 30-foot front, yeah, setback, well done. Any questions with the way it's printed up by anybody? Legends, architect stamp? One milar, we got these four copies.
I just need a check, too.
And you have one?
No.
No?
No check.
Okay. All right, we do need a check for the, for the layout.
Are we doing the six lots?
Yep. Okay, very good. While you're doing that, sir, is there motion to accept the plans on Old Westbrook Field Road and River Bend? River Bend Road. For the way the lots are cut out, six consecutive lots in front of the Old Westbrook Field. All lots have enough frontage and setbacks. Is there motion to accept the plans as written, Joe? Motion made, any questions? Second.
Second.
I'll go to the, take this one, I'll start, so milar and stuff. Why, sir? Want to share? That's fine, you have, both people, you have to, you can have all the rest back plus the milar.
What was the school?
We don't need this, definitely not to lose.
Oh, I do, too. Everybody?
Here.
Money in the bud. And speaking of that, there is a meeting tomorrow for anybody that wants to attend. Only 28. Sure.
Okay, good. We should, we should.
Like to play dry. Dry.
With that, thank you much, thanks for updating. Thank you, Tony, a minute, although we have to redo it, make sure everything's going along, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'd love to watch your content.
Thank you.
Right now, if you would, we've got five minutes before the continuation. Continuation of public care for Copper Road, Beaman Road. Excuse me, Beaman Road Solar. What I'd like everybody to do, and Kathy, correct. There is a review. It's Gmail, Lot 4, Copper Road, Joyce Island. It's reference to this, these lots, this is three lot four. And I'd like everybody to somehow find it. If everybody's got it, review it right now. Stuart went on at Conservation. And they, they've addressed the issue, that they have a couple of questions that we would, one, discuss with the applicant, and two, take into consideration, okay? So. All right, well, okay, I'm close. I'm about a month and a half off.
Did you look at your folder?
Yes. We'll get there.
Now, the news. Got everything now. Yep.
All right, 7:30. Continuation of the public care in Special Firmic 283 site plan number 51. For Beaman Road Solar. The applicant, if you question, is the truck being operated for a megawatt down, on the solar facility. Over the last couple of weeks, last week specifically, we went back and further, we've had discussion with the engineers. We had some good, Monica, yeah, Monica. And we had, if you forward review, the council is with them. And there's still ongoing questions that the board and applicant, not student, have. We'd like to do this evening, continue, continue with this. And then also, the board will have, either member of the board will have questions from Conservation. They have finished their review and have asked us to ask a couple other questions. And with us tonight is also Jeff Wall from Graves Engineering. Jeff will have the review that was put to him by the applicant. Answer, if there are any questions on that behalf also. Now, someone will set me straight clean. We're still discussing, ongoing discussion about Lot 4. Is that correct, applicant? Pedro, is that correct?
That, that is.
Lot 4. Thank you. Nick, you too. If you don't mind your first names.
Correct, yeah, maybe fast enough. That was, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, we're hoping to wrap up the Conservation the next meeting.
Okay.
That's our goal. So hopefully we can be up here for Lot 4 of the next scheduled public care.
Okay. We'll start, if the board doesn't mind, Jeff Wall, Graves Engineering representative. Jeff, have you had the opportunity to review all, or what has been presented for Lot 4? Questions that you might have had, or questions that we could be answered on?
Do they have respect to the application for the planning board?
Yes, that's correct.
I have, and just today, I received some plans in the recommissioning estimate late last week.
Yes.
And I, later last week, Friday afternoon, and this morning, I reviewed those documents and put forth a follow-up review letter issued today.
Okay.
For both Lot 3 and Lot 4.
Very good. With that, now, the review based on stormwater, we had no concerns with?
Correct, correct. There was some, we're talking about Lot 3 and Lot 4, or just Lot?
Uh, Lot 4, that's what we started with, right Pedro? That's what we're on tonight, Lot 4.
Let me summarize everything for you, buddy.
Lot 3.
Lot 3 is a small one, well, conservation.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can probably make a long story short. With respect to both Lot 3 and Lot 4.
Okay.
We did a review, we issued our first review letter, I think, about December. We had a few concerns, a few things to be addressed. Those were addressed by way of our review letter that came out in, I believe, this February. Thank you. And since that time, there was only things that I was concerned about, is we hadn't seen surety estimates for either project. And likewise, there were some drafting issues to be straightened about, about clarifying what wires were above ground, what wires were underground, just so I could know where the connections were, and so forth. Those issues were the last remaining issues, this is February, they have been fully addressed from an engineering perspective, with respect to stormwater management, I had no concerns with the plans before this planning board.
Very good. All right, any questions, Bob?
Are we going to go over the issues that the Conservation has passed on to us, or?
That will be next, I just want to clear up.
No, on 3, we're fine.
All right, Derek, have questions? No, nothing. All right, Melissa? Sue? Jeff, if you would, representing the board at this time, seeing there's no other questions about what we were just discussing, if you would, the board has a couple of questions that, up six here, that we'd like to have, excuse me, the applicant answer, and you have input if you feel you can openly, please.
Sure.
Okay? To the applicant, Nick Pedro. Basin number 8, Lot 4, okay? Everybody know where we are, you folks? Nick?
Okay.
Is that up there now, if you could, please?
That's number 8, yeah.
All right, that's in the, that's in the, that's in the southeast corner?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. It was moved and redesigned, correct?
Yeah, about two, two redesigns on it. The original submission.
Okay.
Yes.
And the reason for it being moved and redesigned was due to the flow of the water that Conservation wanted and that you felt agreed upon, is that correct?
Well, the initial redesign was because we had it located in the 200-foot natural setback.
Yep.
We misinterpreted the original bylaw, there was a, there was a bylaw posted online, definitions were a little bit different from the current bylaw, I guess it was a previous bylaw that we were reading. Once we remained aware of that, we pulled all the site disturbance outside of the 200-foot natural buffer. So that was the first time the basin was redesigned. The second modification was the basin looked like this, but Conservation had minor concern with existing groundwater separation. So I just modified the shape of the basin to kind of follow the distant contour to provide the minimum groundwater separation that is required that Conservation was looking for. So there was probably a small corner that could be interpreted as being within the two-foot groundwater separation area. So after going through that, we regraded the basin. The shape roughly stayed the same, and we configured it to also pull as much disturbance out of the 50 to 75-foot buffer zone, because Conservation informed us that they'd like to keep as much disturbance out of that area for these solar projects. So we also went around the site, tightened up the grading, trying to keep as much disturbance out of that 50 to 75-foot zone. So that, those are the two changes to that basin.
Based on that design, your north arrow is there, the top of Coy Hill is the right edge of your, the left edge of your paper, that's the top of Coy Hill.
Roughly, yeah, this is the high point, drops down a little bit, comes back up roughly in this area, but yeah.
So the way the solar panels are set up there, okay, running east and west, all the water on that slope will run from west to east, correct, mostly? That's the way the storms come in over Coy Hill, and they're going to run in between the panels, correct?
So just to clarify, are we still looking at Lot 4?
I'm looking at what you just pointed out.
This basin right here.
That catch basin. That catch basin and that swale that's running now north and south to that catch basin, is going to be able to handle all the runoff, you calculated that it's going to be able to handle all the runoff in between those panels, into that swale in the north part of it, and run it all down into that, that catch basin, be able to handle it all?
That is correct. So the existing grading kind of runs in this fashion, so it kind of sheds water like this, kind of like this. So we have a separate basin up here, so all the water from the panels isn't going to go to this basin. But, you know, let's say this portion, driveway and panels of this section right through here is designed to come across, run into a swale, we had some check dams within the swale, solar water down, and then come down to this basin. There's also a swale down here that will catch any runoff that would be coming in this direction before it gets to the wetland.
Now, over the first five years of timeframe, seeing that you presented that you wish to put down wood chips and/or stump grinding, is correct?
Correct, wood chips is the preferred or requested ground cover is what we submitted on.
Over the first couple of years, seeing that there's nothing else there in the wood chips or grindings, whatever it may be, unsettled. Due to, plain and simple, they'll be just piled one on top of the other, they're unsettled or compacted in any way. They'll start to move somewhat, you have to admit to that, we all know that some of them will move. What is the maintenance and how do you, what is the inspection time? I couldn't find it in your format, in your booklet, specifically within the first couple years, of that swale and now those catch basins right there, the way the water's going to run into them. Do you have a maintenance program for them? Is it every six months, once a year, that they'll be at the same depth they were on the day that you, you hopefully get signed off on the project?
Yes, there is a maintenance plan, and the maintenance plan calls for routine monitoring and, you know, repairs as necessary. Seeing that there is a large cleared area, and we're realistic, we do, we understand that, you know, stormwater is going to find its path of least resistance, and some areas of channelized flow may occur in those areas, will have to be maintained throughout the process, whether you get loman seed, final cover, you know, any areas that you're going to see condensed concentrated stormwater flow, we need to be raked out, regraded if necessary if you're seeing a lot of concentrated flow in those areas. But as far as the maintenance of the swales go, those are to be maintained, I believe every six months, there'll be inspections during the initial growing season, as this swale is stabilized, it'll be inspected to ensure that the vegetation is catching, because these are proposed to be grass swales through here, based on the grades, it's a little bit shallower than something steep in this area, we're proposing drip wrap. So we'll maintain and inspect that, and ensure that it is fully grown and stabilized, and can handle that flow.
Because if not, all you're going to do is overflow the, that's going to eventually, you're talking to maintenance, at some point, there's a possibility and a probability that that will overflow and create more of a flow which into the wetlands, which Conservation doesn't want to have happen, is that correct?
I don't believe there'd be an overflow situation, I mean, like you said, if you're saying worst-case scenario, as you're speaking about the swales never maintained, it's fully, you know, becomes full of sediment and wood chips. This swale would possibly overflow towards the wetland. This would most likely, based on the grades, if it wasn't going to overflow, it would overtop and go out towards this natural vegetated buffer area, if the water wasn't going to make it towards the detention basin. So if the, if there was going to be an area that would overflow, due to lack of maintenance, the whole thing was filled with sediment and wood chips, it would be this area right here. Does that address your question or concern?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Sue?
So my understanding is that they would like confirmation from Jeff of these items?
Yeah.
Number four, that the basin bottom is not underwater? So are we going to do this one day?
I would like to, I'd really like to do it. No, I'm just saying.
That's why I asked, if Jeff had a copy of these.
Jeff, do you have a copy of this?
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of these, I've reviewed these questions, I responded to your office earlier today, and I'm prepared to discuss them. And if I could start with the wood chips?
Yeah, I was, yeah, you were going to get that, go ahead. So, the board and you, so do it.
While we're on that subject, first of all, the swales are proposed to be loman seeded in grass, not wood chips, which is good, because in my opinion, I've seen enough wood chips move along, they're wafers, they tend to stack up, flowing water will move them along. Unlike wood chips, which are cut, the chipping machine, stump grindings are much more prone to staying put and not being displaced by water. Stump grindings, stump goes in the tub, gets shredded, it's long shreds, they just don't get displaced the way wood chips do. So I would urge the board, if they're entertaining one or the other, I would, I would recommend you go to move stump grindings. They're going to be pulling stumps, they're going to have stumps available on the site, they're going to be generating stump grindings, which are a byproduct, they either get hauled off the site or could use for erosion.
Very good.
Secondly.
Yep.
My preference would be to loman seed and provide vegetative cover in the area where the solar panels are. It's very typical for the solar projects, they might be cut, trees cut, stumps removed, and solar panels put in, like you generally speaking, within the fenced area, sometimes they might be cutting but not rubbing around the perimeter. It's common to use stump grinding. It's common to use stump grindings or wood chips to supplement the ground cover out there instead of vegetative cover. But to use vegetative cover, grasses with clovers on the inside of the fence. There's a couple of notes in the plan that led me to believe that that was what was being proposed. Grass cover, vegetative cover within the fenced area, possibly wood chips, stump grindings outside, specifically wood chips.
On the grass cover, it seems like some of them use a different mixture. Is there a specific that has a diffused root system that's gonna hold and yet also let the water, either from the runoff of the panels or rainwater, both, stay and get moved into the ground, other than just hitting and washing down? We've got contractors 50-pound bags, alright? That goes down quick cover, see you later. What is gonna maintain? Do they, in looking at their description and stuff, four out of five applicants that we have, they're all using the same. So there must be one. What is specific to your, what would you like to see?
I would like to see something that has a good vigorous root system. So it's not prone to erosion. And that it's gonna survive there. The developers would wanna see something that doesn't grow quickly. What so that it's not like you gotta mow it every couple of weeks or so. It's not gonna be mowed and maintained like you want, I don't expect that. But it needs to be periodically mowed and maintained to grow from getting up to it. There are some species of grasses out there that are slower growing. And I've seen some of those being used. We have some municipal clients who like to see clover mixed in there too, because it'll attract the bees. But it'll also, it provides a very thick cover. So the impact of the rainfall, the grass or the clover takes a good amount of the impact, which is the start of the whole erosion process. So, there's no one finite, this is the best. But depending on who you speak with, they might lean one way toward the clover or another way. Anybody writing social should lean toward the slow-growing grasses. But it was, whether it's slow-growing grasses, clovers, that was my understanding, is that, or my interpretation, that was being contemplated. When I saw the email from the Conservation Commission about wood chips, I read that to be wood chips throughout the site.
That's where I brought it up at the beginning, and that's why I'm asking this. So that we have this specific, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm worried about that. I was involved with another project in another town where they finished their construction late last year, having fully stabilized the site. They have some wood chips mixed out there in various locations. But just from the lack of vegetative cover and frost in the grounds and every rains back in November, December, it was a bit of a problem. And I'd rather see vegetative within that fenced area.
Very good. Thank you, Melissa. Melissa, I mean, going that way, go on. Alright, with that, another catch to that. Question to Nick and Jeff, if you have any, please step up and answer or help us here. The, I'm gonna go back to the basin eight again. The basin bottom is not underwater based on the soil test results, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
There is, Jeff, you're shaking your head. So that's confirmed by all, based on the water table and everything else, or however it may be done, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, Nick, go ahead if you wish.
No, for the record, we also created a section through the basin, kind of like what was requested for basin eight.
Yup.
As we provide on the revised plans. You know, on the plan, we do have proposed grade, existing grade, and, you know, two-foot offset from the seasonal high groundwater, all shown in a section. You know, those are based on soil test pits within the area of the proposed detention basin. So that was done for that basin specifically after the question arise with the Conservation Commission regarding the groundwater separation. So, I just wanted to provide the detail.
Yup.
Showing that it did comply.
Okay. Melissa, that was one of them, right? And I'll direct this to Melissa Ferris. Number five was covered at the beginning, correct?
Okay.
Thank you. Move right on down. This is and was a concern. And it's a number six on the list, folks. You probably looked at that. Will the basin waters sit long enough in the warm, and warm up in the hot summer days? And once it leaves the basin, does it have enough time to cool before entering entering the wetlands and charging before it goes in? How is that? Did you look at that at all?
Yeah, we discussed this at the last scheduled Conservation Commission meeting.
If you were, in a nutshell, because that's still something.
So, in a nutshell, you know, we have an outlet, our lowest outlet's about half a foot from the bottom of the basin. So, this basin's not gonna hold water for an extended period of time. So in that half, half a foot separation from the bottom, the bottom of the basin, based on the grades of the basin, is very minimal, probably a couple hundred square feet. So, we don't feel that water will be sitting in the basin for a prolonged period of time. You know, we put the outlets at the bottom of the basin in that area to ensure that the basin doesn't retain standing water and become a mosquito hazard in the future. So, we don't feel that the water temperature exiting the basin is gonna be a concern based on the time of the water would actually be in the actual basin. We provided calculations to the Conservation Commission once this concern was raised. And it appears that the basin should be watered within 24 hours. We don't feel that's an issue.
You made a comment last week that the distance between the contour lines was two feet of a top on the topographical map of that area.
Okay, these are all two-foot contours, that's correct.
How did you come up with a two-foot distance between contours? When I'm looking at your map, at the topo map of the area, of that area specifically, and the contour lines are specific to a 1 over 25,000, okay, that I'm looking at, topo map, and their 10-foot differences? How do you come up with two feet?
I might have misunderstood the question. This map, these contours, all these lines?
These are contours on that map.
These are two-foot contours, correct. Based on the ground survey.
On a topographical map that you could...
Not on the USGS.
It is the USGS.
Those are...
Alright, because right there, bud, that shows 10-foot. Alright, specific to your plan.
To this plan, survey for this project.
Very good.
Two-foot, okay. Sorry about that.
We're good from this to this. Okay.
Be quite a steep site if these were all.
Yeah, it would be, but, you know. 10-foot. Any other questions, please? Jeff, any rebuttals, anything you wanna add to it?
With respect to... With respect to the thermal, I agree with Nick, very small volume. So if there were water there, first of all, it's supposed to infiltrate, so it'll be gone within about a day or so. So is that if the water were even warm, when it goes back into the ground, it'll cool to ground the ground temperature by the time it migrates over to the wetland. And very small volume. I mean, we're talking just a few hundred cubic feet, which is not much. My point is, even if it could be there and be warmed up, the next rainstorm comes along, it's, I hate to use the term, but it's a drop in the bucket. So it's not gonna be any thermal issues that I would see for wet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. To the abutters, questions about what we're talking about in the lot, the area that we're talking about, concerns?
Yes.
Go.
On lot four, there was talk about the calculations, the Conservation Committee meeting, that the calculations used meadow as the, that was the method they used, they used meadow for the calculation.
Okay.
While we're talking wood chips, but now we're talking something different. Possibly clover or some other sort of grass. Does that change the calculations in any way?
Go, please, go.
Does it change the calculations in any way?
You got either engineer right there that's gonna give me answers. Ask him that question.
Which way is this really gonna go? Is it wood chips? Is it meadow? Is it clover?
So, for the record, the applicant, we proposed wood chips, but they're fine with going with a vegetative cover as Jeff recommended. Mr. Rodriguez said, you know, we'll work with the town. Whatever this board, as the special permit granting authority, like to see for final ground cover, they have no concerns with. Wood chips was the original proposed vegetative cover. Oh, excuse me, I defer to the attorney.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So again, I'm Adam Costa, represent the applicant. So just to be clear, our proposal, based upon other projects that the applicant has completed in other communities, was for wood chips or stump grindings. But we appreciate the different communities have different preferences. So we're amenable to whatever the board sees fit to require in terms of stump grindings, wood chips, some other form of vegetative cover. Our preference would be to maintain something other than the vegetative cover in the areas outside the panels that'll be traversed. Something like stump grindings, which I think are preferred by your review engineer to the wood chip, that's okay with us. Obviously stump grindings, as we had mentioned at the last meeting, means that we can retain some of the trees on site and simply grind them, grind the stumps, as opposed to having to ship that offsite. So that has a secondary benefit as well. With respect to the area of the panels themselves, we're happy to plant that area if you prefer with some sort of vegetative cover. We've used an appropriate seed mix. There are different types that work in different locales. But again, we defer to the board in that regard. We're happy to do that if that's your preference over the stump grindings or the wood chips.
Very good, thank you. Jeff?
I'd like to say, with respect to this gentleman's comment, a question. Meadow is, for solar projects that are proposed to be vegetated, grasses or clover, meadow is an appropriate ground cover to model. It's longer than lawns. Therefore, it abstracts or takes up more rainfall and prevents a little more rainfall from becoming runoff than a lawn. That said, if, I know the proposal is not now to put wood chips down, but wood chips are not reasonably represented by meadow in the hydrology calculations. So if wood chips were in fact going to be proposed, I would recommend to the board and to the Conservation Commission that the hydrology calculations be run with a different ground cover, because I think wood chips will produce a lot more runoff than a meadow would.
Okay.
That said, if they're gonna go with the grasses, the meadow's fine.
Very good. Question answered?
Yes, thank you.
No, no, that's a great question. You got everybody involved, so.
Again, wood chips were a concern from the beginning. As far as how much water was gonna move through them. It's gonna be changed to an appropriate ground cover approved by an engineer. Sounds good to me.
I directed a question to you now. Last week, you had questions about runoff with the pipe running across the road, dispersing water. Your photo showing the water backing up.
That was from location three going into location four.
Nick, you remember that?
Yup. Wanna point out where the pipe is?
Yeah, one more time for everybody, please.
So, the culvert exists right here.
Alright.
Town line, some old stone foundations, two wetlands. Pipe goes from one wetland to a second wetland.
With that discussion and Nick's input there, have either, I believe I did, and I'm pretty sure I did, after the applicant and/or abutters approach, the highway superintendent who was present this evening in conversation, he said?
I talked to Tom.
Yup.
I've never met.
Right in front of you, right here. It was careful.
I did talk to him, he did call me back. He said he was gonna go out there and take a look at it, look at the plans. We haven't had a chance to talk since then. I was hoping we would. Because it is a concern. That area does get very wet. And it's obviously with a simple rain, that culvert's being overwhelmed. It's at capacity.
Okay, Tom, you're aware, or I'm aware. Nick, in the conversation last week, you suggested, you know, it wasn't, I believe it was a suggestion, about an X amount of diameter pipe going across to disperse the water, is that correct?
We didn't suggest a new culvert.
It was conversation.
Yeah, we said we'd work with the town. If the town would like to upgrade the facilities in this area, the applicant would work with the town, maybe make a contribution towards that. And work with the highway department. Because like we talked about before, it would need significant permitting through wetlands, because you'd be essentially disturbing a wetland, two wetlands. And then you'd be working within the town right away. So, there'd be permitting concerns that we're not looking to, that we obviously cannot do with this project. But the applicant would be willing to contribute to a new pipe.
Tom, would you be willing to either sit with them or give them a time and date that you'd be able to meet with them? So we could get something moving with that?
Yes, I'm more than happy to. I understand there was some talk about that last week, which is why I'm here. Had no idea about the, even being contacted for last week's meeting, it was news to me. But I, I'm here tonight just for that reason, that pipe should definitely be upgraded.
Is that something that the town would not oppose? They're trying to alleviate water coming off one site, going across the road. There was video, it was a great video that was shown of where the water's backing up and flooding along that area. And the applicant did decide, or did make a suggestion, that they'd be willing to put a pipe across the road to get it under the road so you're not gonna have a washout over there at some point, okay? So, between now and the end of tonight or something, maybe you guys get together and set a time up so that we could have this taken care of also, if possible? Okay?
Was there, were there any proposals from any of the engineers on the size of the pipe?
Not yet. We, it was back and forth, just in, you know, nothing directly. You guys can figure that out. Something that's gonna alleviate the pressure, something that's not gonna get backlogged, as you know, happens with sticks and branches going through, and then it overflows. Or you get a call that there's 18 inches deep going across the pipe on a snowy morning. So, you guys figure it out. You're the engineer, Sue.
I have a question. If they said that they're not in that, they don't have to permit for that, does that mean town has to permit? It's a con con. Okay.
That was, Mr. Chairman, if I could, that was my, that was my comment. I've seen this happen in other communities where you've got a public way in or improvements required, whether it be restructuring an intersection or adding a culvert, something along those lines. So certainly, we're happy to work with the town. We're happy to perform whatever services we can, although I doubt that the town wants the liability of a of a private contractor attempting to replace a pipe. But to the extent that you wanna condition your approval on us working with the town, providing some sort of a slight bend to the town to assist with the cost of that improvement, we're happy to talk about that.
Okay. I'm looking right at you, Tom, so that's something we can consider with your input. Thank you both. Alright, abutters again, anything?
Yeah, I'm kinda concerned with the phrase of assist with the cost. If it's their project, their modification, that's being done because of them, it should be at their cost, not the taxpayers.
Sue, stand by. Point.
So I was careful in the words I chose, because I, I'm not an engineer. But what I heard said at the last meeting, and your peer review consultant wasn't here, but ours was, was that our belief, our consultant's belief, is that there's no necessary upgrade to this pipe. And in fact, by increasing the size of the culvert, the pipe, you could actually increase the flow of water into the wetlands, which could be problematic. And that it was functioning as it's supposed to, even with the backup that we saw in some of that video that we watched. I don't know that to be true, that's what our consultant said. We're willing, if it's the town's belief that it should be upgraded, to assist with that cost. Now, I don't know what that cost is, I don't know what that project involves. That's the reason why I think you suggested that maybe a conversation be had between our consultant and the DPW director. So, that's fine.
If, and with that, sir, Jeff, can you look at that too, if that's brought up?
I can look at that if...
And excuse me, and assist if Tom needs it? If Tom can refer to you, and then between Nick and you, you guys can come up with?
Mr. Chairman, as long as you can pay for our services with their money.
Alright, you get everybody laughing, so I'll smile.
I'm sorry, I'm not a wise guy, but that's...
Thank you.
I didn't hear that from my neighbor fools. Seriously?
We'll get something going, yeah. Such a innocent concern.
Just so, Tom? I'm sorry.
Correct.
So, Tom, what we saw at the last meeting was a video provided by one of the abutters that showed this culvert. It wasn't over, the water wasn't overtopping the road, it was essentially backing up in this wetland which exists here. That's why my statement, which was reiterated, was that, you know, my interpretation was that pipe's not under a failure condition. It's working as it should, it's taking the water from this ponded wetland area. It's working as it should, it's taking the water from this ponded wetland area to, you know, across the roadway and discharging to this wetland over here. So, you know, this wetland is hydraulically connected to this wetland based on the existence of that culvert pipe. You know, concerns with, as I stated before, adding the extra pipe was, you know, if you add the extra pipes or culverts, you dry out the wetland, in essence, you know, violating the Wetlands Protection Act. So those are the concerns that were raised. Are we taking extra water? And now we're essentially dumping it onto West Brookfield, because the town line's right here. So anything pulled out of this wetland, additional water is sent across the way to this wetland at a faster rate. So what happens naturally here is water does collect and pool in pond within this wetland area. It's relatively flat in this area compared to the rest of the site. So water is kind of pooling, going to the pipe and going across the way. So that was our only concern, was working with conservation, make sure we comply with the Wetlands Protection Act with regards to maintaining the characteristics of that wetland, as it is a delineated wetland, and not causing any downstream impacts. So that's something that'll have to be evaluated once we, if it is decided to increase the capacity of that culvert.
So based on your research, where does the outlet go?
It's right here, so there's a wetland right here, and then there's a second wetland right here. So it goes, and the roadway is right here, so the pipe goes right over the road, it dumps into the other wetland. So it goes from one wetland to the other.
Correct.
But we'd be speeding up the rate in the amount of water which is going towards that wetland was my concern. That's what I conveyed to the board.
Well, where does the well into the right of Cutler Road Extension go, to the east, I should say?
This one?
The well into the east of Cutler Road Extension.
This wetland here.
Correct.
This goes down towards here, towards the pond beyond Route Nine, and that section eventually ends up in that area.
Okay, now I'm aware of that, I was.
So, yeah, I mean.
Based on my observation, I was thinking that the wetland drains to the southeast, I think.
Correct, this wetland does drain, so essentially this wetland carries water this way. These wetlands carry water that way. So there's a significant, there's a distinguished split in where the water goes between these two areas. So that was our only concern with saying, all right, let's just put a new pipe in. We don't wanna cause downstream impacts that aren't evaluated properly. So that's something that it's gonna take some time, it's gonna need to be looked at. We'll have to work with conservation, assuming the town would have to be applicant on that application. So there's a lot of steps that need to be gone through. But we're willing to do an analysis of what's, we believe, is flowing to that pipe and what the impacts could be, we could look at that for you.
Okay. Kathy, right there, please?
Yes. Quick, we'll follow to that. The video which was taken was only from two inches of rain on that particular day. I provided the board information on other rainstorms from the past 10 years, which exceeded two inches of rain. Basically, the video shows that we were right at the very top. Sometimes it was over the top, sometimes it was right at the top, with that two inches of rain. And in the past, there have been storms that exceed that substantially. It's not a hundred year storm, as Nick had mentioned a couple of times. This is a storm kind of thing that happens often, and is going to continue to happen. As far as the pipe, no one's asking to put the pipe lower to get it under just more capacity at the same height, so that, again, it doesn't flow the road. And again, that's something for engineers to figure out. No one is looking to destroy wetlands or remove water quicker, just if the solar field is moving water quicker to the wetland, which again, I have to believe it's going to happen, it's gonna move water quicker. Just from the logging in the area, we've seen an increase in water going into the wetland area, just from thinning out trees. So clearly, in clear cutting the entire area, more water is gonna, or not more water, but the water's gonna move more rapidly, regardless of what kind of ground cover is put in. It just seems that that's what's gonna happen. And all we're looking to do is just not have a real washout.
Yeah, we can, we'll work with whatever the DPW would like to see. I mean, if we're gonna legislate, put a pipe at a higher elevation, you know, there'd have to be a significant amount of work done, because the pipes require a certain amount of cover, so they're protected with the traffic loads and things of that nature, so you have to go back, raise the grade of the road, so on and so forth. But we'll work with the town and how they would like to approach that. I mean, we'll work with them on a possible solution for that, for that problem.
Nick, it's, it's the purpose of the basins to actually slow the flow of water into the wetland, right? So the comment was made about some of the tree removal that's been done, but there's no stormwater management that's been done in connection with the thinning of trees that's occurred in recent years. With this project, yes, you're clear cutting portions of the site for purposes of the solar panels, but how are those, aren't those basins serving the purpose of slowing the water so that the rate of runoff is not increasing rapidly offsite into the wetlands?
I just heard the opposite on site four. How can a basin be speeding the water up so it doesn't heat up? But then the basin is magically slowing down when it needs to.
It's actually not a basin, it's just directing the water, vocalizing the water.
I'm just unclear on how that works.
We can, and this is in respect to all, we don't know. No one knows. Everybody can predict using scientific tables, using compatibility of the soil, soil consistencies. There isn't a solar field here long enough in the country where things have shown, they're only 10, 15 years old, in different rains and atmospheric times of changing drastically. We have an engineer, we have an engineer, they all look at it. We have to sit here and go, okay, and then not read but, but try to work it all out. We all have questions reference to water. Derek, you have something to say about water, so if you would, please.
Yes, I agree with the plan, and Nick, if you look at, especially that we've been saying the word wetlands a lot, I think conservation has to be involved. You agree that you're gonna work with them, I think we shouldn't be going around and around and just go on. I like the fact that you guys agree that we're gonna work with them, but I really won't, we don't know. Conservation does a great job protecting our wetlands, so they're not here, you know, it's not our discussion. I propose to, yep, you agree you're gonna work with them, just to.
Okay. And at the beginning, Nick, you said you're still working things out with conservation?
For Lot Four.
For Lot Four.
For Lot Four, no, but on Lot Four, there's.
For Lot Four, yeah, we left it with, the last and only outstanding item was, they wanted confirmation from Jeff that he finalized the review of the stormwater and everything was current, I believe. There was some correspondence going back and forth. So that's how we left things with them previously. And we're hoping to close out, I believe, on the 10th with conservation?
Okay, next week.
And, Mr. Chairman, the reason that I'm asking the questions is, I recognize that I'm not an engineer and that.
I'm sure.
But we happen to have both of the engineers in the room tonight. So I think having the questions asked and getting not only an answer from the applicant's engineer, but confirmation from your own period of use makes sense.
And that's why we, I asked Derek to get involved with that. So you wouldn't have been Tom and whomever. Those are tough questions to ask and have answers to specifically, okay, about water, where it's gonna go. We see it, they see it, and everybody's got this answer. With Derek's request, and we have no other concerns at this time, what I'd like to do is direct the attention to the chief, Fire Department. Chief, do you have concerns and questions reference to Cutler Road?
Yeah, so, good evening, everybody. I apologize, it's our first meeting here, I've been busy with the fire law committee for most nights. So just to introduce myself, my name's Adam Lloy, Fire Chief in Warren, this is Paul Foster, Fire Chief in West Brookfield. We had an initial review of the site plan approximately a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, I believe. At that time, we did not have plans that showed the battery or container information. So that's kind of new to us this evening. We're looking at that kind of preliminarily and kind of wrapping our heads around that. One of the things that immediately kind of stuck out to us was where the battery storage was proposed. In my opinion, I felt, and I believe I echo Chief Foster's too, that we felt that, you know, this area was a little bit more at risk because it is a one-way in and out area. There's no, I mean, the reality is, is the residents on there would have to be brought through if there was an incident with the battery storage. So that was a concern to us as to where that is. And I had reached out to Nick and asked him to kind of rework those numbers and come up with a minimum dimensions as to where the battery storage is. So I was hoping tonight we could kind of review that, see where it is, and also go into a little more detail about the battery storage itself, the batteries, and we could ask a few questions there. So I guess I'll turn it over there.
Sure, go ahead, Nick, and you guys off the floor.
No problem. So following up, Chief and I have a few good phone conversations over the past few weeks. And, you know, based on our conversations, we came up with a value of a 300-foot bumper from the roadway would be a safe value to site the batteries. So, you know, for the sites in Warren, we relocated the batteries and put a dimension on the revised plan. So the closest point from this battery to the edge of the right-of-way, which hasn't, isn't even the edge of the roadway, is an extra about eight or 10 feet, about 302 feet right here. And then from this battery system right here, we relocated the battery. It used to be right here, pushed it back, so we got 300 feet in that direction to maintain that separation. Just to, for the sites in West Brookfield, the applicant is gonna work with you guys during the building permit process, as the plans have been signed off on by the zoning board already. But the full review of the fire protection system, the batteries, everything needs a sign-off from you guys before it goes to construction. And the applicant is committed to modifying these batteries to comply with that also at that point. We haven't submitted anything revised to West Brookfield as the permit's been issued. So, but the applicant will be required to go back to you guys for a sign-off for construction. At that point, a construction plan will be provided that shows those batteries 300 feet away.
Okay, so that.
There's not a lot of work to do here, because for West Brookfield, the batteries are over 230 feet, 240 feet away from the property line to begin with, because West Brookfield has a bylaw that says no equipment or panels can be within 200 feet of a property line. So we were already set back a little bit further than we were originally in the town of Warren. So moving this battery, you know, all we do is push the batteries back here and put this other equipment up front, that's not a major change. Same thing with here, the battery's here, we're just gonna slide the battery right up here and that'll get us to 300 feet. So there's no concern with wiring or losing capacity to provide that for the entire project, the 300-foot bumper. Do you wanna kind of get into the batteries or?
Yeah, well, can we talk about the containers? The first, you know, I see that the batteries, I see the containers themselves, obviously they do have a suppression system, an ancil suppression system that is manufactured by 3M, a Novex system. I've done a little bit of research just today on some of that stuff there, you know, I think that's appropriate. Now, I'm assuming at this point, it's not necessarily in here, but I'm assuming that, because it states that there's 12 racks of lithium ion batteries in each one of those containers, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So how many batteries actually is that?
I don't know that from my head, it's like known, but in the package that we've sent you through me, that is placed in there.
It's in this package here?
And actually, I.
I looked through, I hadn't seen it, so I may have missed it, but.
I can ask the spokesperson on that, we'll send it to you.
I'm just looking to make sure that that suppression system would be rated completely, I'm sure it is designed that way. I just wanna make sure it's rated for that capacity in that container. You know, it doesn't, I don't see anything specific in here that says it is, I'm assuming it is, I just wanna make sure that we do get that on record.
Correct. And just to kind of circle back with the building permit process, none of this is gonna be built without your sign-off.
Right.
With regards to the fire suppression system, the electrical is gonna be signed off by electrical inspector. So there's still a whole series of checks and balances, and, you know, the applicant's gonna work with you. This is the preliminary design of these systems. I mean, this probably won't be built for another year. And we're still gonna go through a full design process, construction plans, it's gonna go out to bid. Maybe a piece of equipment may change when it goes out to bid. The final package will be approved, will go to the building inspector's office, and will be signed off on by both towns, both fire departments. And there'll be additional period for comment at that point. I think with the site plan process of it, you know, establishing minimum required buffers that you guys would like to see would help, and so on and so forth, that we can handle site plan-wise. I mean, final approval of the fire suppression system, that's to be handled in the building permit process. Where you guys get a full, you'll get a package probably three times the stick as this.
Purpose of tonight was to alleviate some of our concerns initially, as well as some of your abutters, and I can understand that. You know, I mean, you know, so, you know, this is, again, this is kind of basic information that we've looked at at this point. But, you know, I, again, you know, a couple of these things jumped out at us with, you know, with regard to how close it was to the road initially. So in terms of the batteries here, it looks like these are, you're saying that these are manufactured by LG, they're chem lithium ion modules, so there's not, there's very little liquid in them, is that correct?
Yeah, exactly, so the actual material inside the battery, there's no liquid materials inside the battery.
Okay. All right, and the storage containers, from what I'm seeing, are rated to, they're basically, they're leak-proof, because they have a tank or a bladder installed within them? Okay, what are they mounted on? How are they, how is that, are they gonna be on a concrete pad?
Yes, they're usually mounted in a, in a concrete pad.
On concrete pad?
And I can, we specify, I can make a note, I think, you know, separate images, I can allocate in the package we send you.
Okay.
But we may know exact concrete detail how they usually start.
Okay. That's the first time I've seen those particular batteries used in some of the proposals that I've, that I've looked at anyways, in the three projects that we, you know, because we're, again, in the process of possibly regrafting some of the, a lot of, or we are regrafting some of the bylaws and changing them right now, and that was one of the concerns that we've talked about.
You know, I understand that, they're still around, you know, a lot of people are still using liquid. And batteries, just that we have, because you mentioned the furlong, they're still, it's really hard, almost impossible to use a developed battery itself. So we have done in other states, and we're not, we are up to date with the technology, that's why we're using the states that we can use. I think we put on the report, because we have been working with comment so long, that we have been using their battery for all of our entire portfolio. They, if the town is interested, if Fire Department is interested, they propose that they can come here after the battery is installed before it's commissioned.
I did see that, that was one of the, that was a proposal on here, and I'm sure both of us will take advantage of that. So, you know, that would be a definite for us to, you know, to do an onsite training for that, for that specific piece of equipment.
You know, they, they, you know, exactly, you know, the reason why we're using a solid state battery and within its own fire suppression system, its own alarm, its own software, it's a little more than.
I think some, that's today, and I'm thinking about going and discussing with the abutters, how often, A, do these batteries get changed out, and how often do they get, the provided suppression system gets tested and reactivated or whatever, as it.
So the, the idea is that inside the battery, there is a very complex software. And because this has to be managed and worked with, it's a very specific requirement. If there's anything wrong with the millionaire cover, the whole battery will just shut off until that is repaired. The fire suppression system, I don't know exactly how often they test it out, you know, they test it out once a year.
You'd, they'd have to be required, they'd have to follow, they'd have to do a unit.
Exactly, and it's not just the, the, the fire suppression, the, the alarm, you know, the software, they, they love this. And that's something that the manufacturer said that they will run with you guys.
I'm just asking to make sure that you put out there.
I know how often that has to be tested, I mean, I'll make it out there, so. And we had talked about, obviously, you know, access to the site itself, through the fencing, the gates. Both of us would have to have our individual Knox blocks on there, because they're separate keys. So, I mean, that would be something, obviously, that's standard in there. You know, that was, that was definitely something we talked about. This particular project has access roads, you know, throughout it, pretty well actually, compared to some of the other projects I've seen, so. So, you know, and the turnarounds, I think I gave you the dimensions of our walk, just talking in full spoke with regard to, you know, emergency turnarounds and whatnot. So there's no, there's no upgrade to the cover road itself, right? There's no roadwork being done, per se, I'm just curious.
As far as roadwork goes, there'll be some roadwork in Beaman Road, on the Westbrook Field side, as part of that project. We have two culverts going under Beaman Road that we've worked with the town on, that were requested to be installed. And we have two catch basins that were requested, that will be added on to these pipes or in this area. So there'll be a little bit of roadwork here, minor, probably take a day to get the pipe in. You know, and it's part of the conditions that were associated with that permit where the road's going to be passable at all times. So whether plates are used, or they do have the pipe.
That was just my concern, is it, again, it's.
Install and backfill as they go, I don't know what the exact process is going to be. The requirement is that the road's passable at all times.
Yeah, I think some of the concerns from the butters I heard, I think the biggest concern was contamination from possible lithium batteries. But that was before type of battery was stated, we have a type of container, was there any information out there? So, you know, certainly I, you know, look forward to working with, you know, on the suppression system or whatnot. But I, you know, I'm glad to see that there is, I'm glad to see that they were moved off, off-site or on-site. But they were willing to accommodate that 300-foot correction.
So as Pedro stated before, we understand, we're putting this project in two towns, and these guys are willing to work with the towns to satisfy any safety concerns, I mean, these sites aren't usable to them, if the roads aren't passable, they need to be accessed. They need to be, have, you know, provided safe access to the sites. So they'll work with you guys during the final permitting process and final equipment selection. Make sure you have all the information you need, make sure you guys are satisfied from a, you know, fire safety standpoint. You know, we're going to have site signage, so before the signs are installed, we'll run a draft, paper copied by you guys, just to say, this is the type of signage we're going to put up on the site, just to make sure everybody understands, you know, where the shut-offs are, all that type of information. And that's going to be sign-mounted right by the gate, right where the Knox boxes would be. So, you know, if any emergency personnel do need to enter the sites, they'll have a site map showing where the batteries are, which, you know, each type of equipment is listed on there, you know, which one's the battery, which one's a transformer, per se. And then there'll be also a list of emergency contacts, utility information, all that information will be sign-mounted. And we'll make sure to run that by you guys, make sure any information included on that sign is satisfactory for you guys. Just so all the proper contact information is there for anything that, in case anything does happen.
The question I was, right off the top of my head, certainly I will reach out if there's anything else we'll sit through. And, you know, but our plan is to review this jointly as we continue to move on, you know, because it is mostly jurisdictional. So, you know, but, you know, I'm glad to see, I appreciate the update on this information. The only thing I, yeah, again, the only thing I didn't see in here, I mean, has a lot of the, I just want to make sure I get the exact battery information.
I'll send you all that. I believe the package I was sending through was, I don't know if I can give you the comments, it's a few days.
Okay.
So I will be sending it from here, from there to you.
Okay, thank you.
As long as, I'll speak for both chiefs present this evening, as long as we can keep them satisfied. One of the requirements is that both agencies or departments on the site plan are satisfied with the information supplied and the concerns that they have our address and taken care of. We look at that when they come back to us in the overall scheme of everything, okay? We have asked in the past for information leading up to the containers because I know of three instances where the battery storage containers are completely different, not one of them is the same. So, you know, the chief had asked, you know, what is set up, what it's made out of, venting, okay? What is it going to vent, and how does it vent? It keeps the flow inside, but if there is a gas release or a battery malfunction, where's it going? Is it going outside, is there an emergency vent that the stuff will vent to the outside? And what is it that's leaving that battery inside? Or the fire suppression system is turned on, where's it going? It's in a box, the box is closed, so eventually something's going to either initiate a vent somehow to put it into the atmosphere. Well, what the heck is it? Okay, those are questions that have been brought up, those are questions that hopefully get answered by either the applicant going through their sources, whoever your source may be. And the other thing that, the other thing that, in thinking that the board is addressing at this time and has in the past, Nick, I appreciate it, and Pedro, the same thing, that, that road, from the day that we start hypothetically, is never blocked, never. Not a piece of machinery, an 18-wheeler sitting to take a right-hand turn coming in with panels, that a backhoe, an excavator, two D-10 dozers are sitting in the road, and we have an emergency. So those are things that, you know, think of, they have their concerns, we will have them in the decisions. With that, Brian, you've got one question, go ahead please.
Okay, say like five years from now, so when this is all done, and the technology changes, and we're made to replace all these containers or something, what happens?
What happens? It would have to come back here to the boards, the police, and our fire department, who would ever be concerned with it? Because now you have a completely different situation going on, a permit and a discussion.
I want to know who's going to pay for it, that's all I'm asking.
Well, the applicant does at that time, sir. The applicant is changing their facility, so it comes back to the boards, the designated boards of departments, reviewed, and then it would, it would be changed by the applicant, we are not responsible for that at all.
So they'd be responsible for?
For the life expectancy inside the fence, Brian, yeah.
Okay.
For the life expectancy inside their, their properties at the.
So if the company sells three times or something, then what do you do?
Whomever, and if you wish to have input, go ahead, fellas.
Pedro? The special permit, like any permit that the board issues for any sort of a project, unless it says otherwise, is a covenant that runs with the land. It gets recorded in the chain of title, it's binding on the current owners, it's binding on any successors in the signs. So whoever would inherit the project, purchase the project in the future, one, two, three owners down the line, if that should occur, those owners are bound by the same terms and conditions. And if they wish to change the project, they've got to come back and modify the approval that's already on record.
Answered, Brian?
Yep, that was good.
Very good, Pedro?
I just wanted to add, that's also the reason why we put the decommissioning estimate, just because that we apparently, personally, that's not a real deal.
And that's something that's been working. Any other questions while you're over there?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I have a question on, I think Jeff kind of brought it up a little bit with the stump grinding and shreddings, that they be suggested in the road?
Negative.
Just want to clarify that, because that could cause problems for the chief and his equipment, if you're going to put five inches stump grindings in there.
In the perimeter road within the confines of the facility?
No.
Okay, all right. No, that's.
Just want to clarify.
Yeah, if I could, I sense some confusion earlier by the audience with respect to the discussions on the stormwater basins. And I want to take a minute.
Sure.
With respect to the basin on Lot 8, and releasing water quickly. That was a small volume of water that's retaining the basin below the lowest output. That water doesn't discharge to a pipe to the stormwater, wetland, that would be water that infiltrates into the soil. My point was that remaining small volume would infiltrate quickly. To the applicant's counsel about what is this function of the basins in general? It is in fact to reduce or increase rates of runoff from the site. Because the ground cover is changing, inherently, that type of change increases rates of runoff during a storm event. The purpose of the basins is to temporarily feed through the water and release it at a slower rate through engineered outlets, whether they're pipes or orifices or so forth. So the main purpose of the basins is in fact to reduce the rates of runoff.
Thank you. A little more important, go ahead.
Appreciate it. One other question, are these ancil systems going to be hardwired to a phone system that calls a security company? And that company then in turn calls the fire department?
They are remotely monitored, that's correct, yes.
Remotely?
Cellular? Yeah, remotely monitored, yeah.
Okay, and that in turn, so basically if something happens, there will be a call from a call center or something to the local fire.
Yeah, if something were to happen, if something went with the system, we get notified right away.
And the system set to shut down, that signal is lost?
It states it here that if there's any kind of sensor, that any issue with any battery cell at all, the entire system shuts down. It states that in here, again, these are very preliminary claims, but it does state that. It also states if there's an audible alarm, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, and then just for the record, there's two monitoring systems, one, there's one separately installed for the battery, and there's another one separate for the solar array.
Okay, but someone will be calling the fire department if this happens?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it goes to a call center, and then the call center in turn calls the fire department?
Yeah, and it'll be the company as well.
Okay.
Any other questions, Nick?
So for the record, I just spoke with Pedro, and they'd like to commit to vegetated cover within the area of the panels as recommended by the town's consulting engineer. So if that's amenable to the board, based on the comments, the applicant would like to modify the proposal for final cover within the area of the system to a vegetated cover. We'll provide a schedule of seeding, you know, New England wetland plants, I believe, they have a solar mix that we've used on other sites, we believe would be appropriate for that. But I'll run that by Jeff, I'll send him the seed mix that we'd like to propose under there, and he can provide comments. And we'll make sure to get that detail on the plane.
Very good, thank you. Bob, problem with that?
No.
Sir?
Whoever.
I like the idea, go ahead.
Good.
Grass over the panels.
Yeah. You got it, thank you. All right, thank you for that. Anything else now, folks? All right, reference this, Lot 3. Lot 3 right now, we're going to continue to, we'll give it eight o'clock, the 22nd, is that? Is there one there?
We do have.
22nd.
Well, we have a hearing at 7:30.
We can come back to this for that, for the first one, it's an introductory on 22nd, okay. 22nd, 8 o'clock. With that, we, if any, I, we're getting, we're real close now to just coming right down to the nuts and bolts, okay? We've had input from everybody, Jeff's been here, questions answered, we thank you. We thank you very much for coming in and sitting down with us and talking about it. Adam has his questions to be referenced, Tom knows what's going on, you'll meet with him, we've touched bases with everybody here. If the applicant has any other questions at the town, if the departments, highway and or fire, or the board have any other questions, we'll hear them on the 22nd, and then we'll start the closing process. And that does not mean closing it off, it'll closing just for import, and the board will make a decision down the road, not too far ahead of us. Okay, is that all right with everybody?
Mr. Chairman, so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, so there's, there's obviously a lot to get to with Lot 4, in the sense that we haven't closed the conservation commission proceeding. So we're not, we're not, we recognize that we've got at least another meeting to go on that.
Yes, sir.
Are we in a position where you're getting closer to being prepared to close on Lot 3? I mean, I, I'm making a list of outstanding items, and I had three or four after the last hearing. I don't have a whole lot after tonight's hearing with respect to Lot 3.
Yeah, we don't either, that's why I said on the 22nd, we'll finish anything that they have concerns of. I'd like to find out how Tom and Nick have worked everything else, because that's part, okay? And Adam should have his stuff done. I, Jeff had a couple, we had a couple questions that you had, Jeff, and references, or are you all set?
I'm all set.
You're all set, I'm standing by if. We got the grass, so we would probably be able to close the hearing.
The items that'll be worked out with Tom.
Three.
Right, so the, I mean, the items that are going to be worked out with Tom are going to be items that would make their way into some form of a condition, right?
That's correct, under the decision, yeah.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's where we stand on that. Then starts the process on 4, okay? Hopefully you'll be all set to move forward with that one, all right?
Will 4 be on the agenda for the 22nd as well, since we'll have our CONCOM?
Let's see what happens with CONCOM, and if they get back to us on it.
Okay, assuming that we close things out of CONCOM, we can let the board know when you place us on the agenda for the 22nd.
We'll try to get, we'll try to get you on the agenda that night in case someone, something else comes in.
I mean, the reality is that we're obviously talking about both lots in the course of our discussion anyway.
Okay, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, fellas, thank you very much, and that will conclude the portion here for the continuation.
Do you want to have that?
Yes, that's all right with you, and the board, sure. As long as it's all right with you, all right? We can do that. We can do that.
22nd. Absolutely. 22nd.
There's the answer you want here, absolutely.
The treasurer does have a question about the commissioning.
Uh, Pedro?
Jeff might be able to.
Administration has a question for, I guess it would be, Nick, you don't think, no. I wouldn't do it either. And your best man to discuss that.
Who wants to go with the disposal of panels or doing that decommissioning? Who pays for that?
That's all worked into the decommissioning. And there's a lot of, I see a lot of different discussion about what's the salvage value of different culverts. But it's taking off, off the site, the panels, the racking system, the supports, the panels, the wiring, overhead and underground, the poles, the fence, receiving anything disturbed.
Just afraid that would be left, and we would have to pay the disposal.
What question, have you had any comments for the decommissioning, Bob? Because, Jeff, do you have any comments on the estimate that I provided, right?
Um, I did provide, it basically said I have no issue with what he presented.
Is anybody from the town that a chief contacted to get comments from that amount?
Can't answer that one, Pedro, we, that's up to treasurer.
That'd be the treasurer.
Treasurer?
Kathy?
But that's up to the engineers that set that up, she's just going to do the.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that.
She just wants to.
You guys, you guys, engineers, Jeff, you guys, and then to Don, which is that? Don will do that one?
Yes.
Yes, so we're all set, yeah, thank you.
You're all set.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, very nice.
All right, we'll just move on here. We have, the next regular meeting will be the 8th of September, that's for sure, okay? They already documented. Adam, thank you, Jeff, any other comment?
No, like I said before, to the other information, I'll review the battery stuff once that comes through. But, you know, that answers the preliminary stuff that we were concerned about right off the bat.
Thanks. It's, uh, it's enlightening, isn't it?
I'll start the next one tomorrow.
Yeah, what you get, the sidewall, don't you, I'd be able to, I'd take the most long flight of the bunch, too. We can do it that way. All right, under comments and concerns, Mr. Porel has a comment.
Yes, I'd like to. All right, so, I don't know if this is an agenda item or, or whatever, but I'll mention it and see what you think. So, so I guess what I want to try and explain is, so I have a complaint, per se. So there was an issue where I had done a public records request, and the police chief provided me the, basically a log entry in a police report which has the planning board's social security numbers on them. So one question I have is, is actually following up, because I actually sent Kathy an email on Tuesday, March 12th, asking some questions, and I didn't get any response to any of that. So I notified the board of selectmen's office and said that, that since she didn't reply, that you should be the proper person to answer the questions.
Me?
Yes.
What's the question?
The question was, I have the, I haven't given you the records, but they're right here, and I can pass them out if you want. So the issue was, is did, because I had, what happened is, let me explain the story from there. So on December 10th of last year, I, as a courtesy, notified your secretary Kathy that the board's social security numbers were compromised that they were giving to me. She then in turn got upset, and I said, look, I says. look, I says, I'm not doing anything with them, I just wanted to tell you that. And the reason why I told her that was because I got these records a year ago and almost a, actually a year and a half ago, and this was the first time that I'd ever told anybody that I had the social security numbers. So, she came into the selectmen's office and had a conversation with Becky and Becky confirmed that, that when the chief gave her the records, she saw the social security numbers, Becky said, the chief says, here's your records, so Becky gave them to me with the social security numbers on them. And what made me upset, and this is the reason why I'm addressing this today, is when, when I got these records, which I think was January of 2018, the chief, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the, the chief was sitting in front of Becky, or in the selectmen's office, and there was an issue with a record that they did not have. So, the chief used, used the town phone, called the police department and said, can you print this out and bring it over? So, I, I was handed these records right away, I was holding on to them and saw the social security numbers, didn't say a thing. So, then it turns out, the chief has hand-delivered this other record, which was actually John Fegel's statement from the issue back on 9/18/2017. And what angered me the most is the chief took John Fegel's statement that he provided to the police and redacted John Fegel's cell phone number and his home number and never redacted your social security numbers. So, I witnessed that and I was like, to me, that was pretty upsetting because if he cared about you, he would have redacted your numbers, instead he cared more about redacting John Fegel's cell phone number. So, then Becky copied it, so I wouldn't be able to see it and then I got it. So, the reason why I'm bringing this up today is, 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 is now a new problem that happened three days ago. So, this issue only this board knows, only town, the two at town council knows, because I actually emailed them the records of your social security numbers. So, town council has been aware since November of last year of this issue. I also wrote two complaints to the selectmen asking that this issue be addressed with this board and, and there's been some mixed reviews on that. So, what this takes a turn is, so now I'm getting threatening messages because these videos are on YouTube, but none of this secret information is. So, people, so somebody who has a username Reggie L., isn't Larry, is now posted 132 comments and is basically writing, some of them are threatening comments, some of them are derogatory comments towards me. And one of the comments says, it's, and these are comments that are to the, to the YouTube videos of planning board meetings. So, one of them, so this one here says, let's see, I wonder what the social security numbers are of these elected officials. I bet the cameraman can ask. So, there's other messages that this person posted actually egging me on to publish your social security numbers. I then have another, another one here that, and I thought, I, I, I know, I've known you for a long time and when I read some of these, I wasn't sure whether they were connected to you, but there's some derogatory ones about a tax increase by a non-resident that owns landlocked property. He says, you'll never get a fucking house built. And then there's another one referencing you with your name in it, so...
See, basically, if any of the cowards are in the room, I'd like them to speak up.
Well, let me finish.
If anybody knows anything.
Right, Brian, hold on a second. Okay, so, so here's where we're at today.
You know anything about that, Bob?
Hey, Brian, please, Brian, Brian, hold on, you know the procedure, you're running for a selectman. You know it. Do not, I will give you a chance.
I'm asking questions, that's all.
You cannot ask questions at this time, Brian.
Listen, listen, don't, don't get your attitude with me, sir. Do not get an attitude with me. Okay? I don't need to hear you jib and jibber, okay? I pay taxes. And I don't know who the hell you think you are. It's time for...
The chairman of the board tonight, I'm asking you to follow...
I could care, like you've been sitting there like a piece of furniture for all these years, okay? I could care less. Don't disrespect me and I won't disrespect you.
I'm not disrespecting...
Your tone of voice is disrespecting me.
Is there a motion to adjourn at this time?
I make a motion to adjourn.
If we can't handle this, Michael, listen, I'm sitting here, listen, I'm not gonna go any further. If this can't be done in the right manner, there was no disrespect shown that man.
Well, here, him speaking is nothing...
You read it on video.
Well, no, him speaking is not to do with me. So, all right, so let me go back to the...
Get to your point, please.
Yes.
And I will make a statement. I have no idea what you're talking about. I've never, and this is a statement for that film, that video.
Yeah.
I have never been on and know how to get on Facebook or ever responded. Don't say yes, you look at me. I'm talking to you and I will ask you.
Oh, no.
I'm talking to you in that camera. If you're gonna blame anybody in this room, have a point. You brought up the chief's comments a couple times using him as the chief. Take it up with him, he's not here to defend himself. You know that procedure.
Right, right.
Thank you. Continue on and get to the point, please.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you had anything to do with this. I'm saying some of these comments had connection to you, but I know it's not you. I know it's not you, okay?
Everybody can say anything they want.
All right, no, I understand, I understand.
During, rather than what Brian wants to say.
So, so, so these, so these comments that are mostly connected to the planning board meetings.
Yeah.
So, I actually, so I never got any of the answers from Kathy.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I sent four complaints to town council.
Okay.
That were just separate to town council, carbon copying the selectmen.
Okay.
And I have talked to town council and he read the information about my complaints, which include some stuff back from the Lois Fegel gravel pit issue, as you know about that.
Yeah, okay, we go back, yeah, that was...
Yes, 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 yes. So, I told town council directly and I talked to Jeff Blake and to Tim Zes and I talked to both of them and they were not even told by this board, they were not even told by the selectmen of that whole entire issue that happened on 9/17. So, I was the one, yes.
Excuse me, 9/17 is the issue one, Route nine, uh, Route 19?
Nineteen, yes, with the John Fegel thing.
And I will state, as a fact, to your camera, looking straight at it, that we did contact the police and the selectmen and legal counsel at that time. I personally did. End of con, end of statement. Go ahead. I did.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, that's kind of, well, that, no, no, I understand, I appreciate you telling me that. So, so, so one of the questions I have, and this is just being curious, so, so let me, so what town council told me is that, he says, well, what are you looking to do? And I says, well, I'm either looking for resolution to my complaint or I'm gonna have no choice but to take legal action. And he says, so he says, well, let me talk to the selectmen. He apparently did talk to the selectmen and the consensus I got from the two town councils saying, I don't care whether you sue them or not, I wasn't instructed to defend them, so I'm not doing anything. And then I was supposed to be put on the Warren selectmen's agenda, but the problem we have here is we have two selectmen who are against one particular selectman, which is...
Careful where you're going, oh.
Which is a separate thing. And, and the two selectmen are aware, have watched the John Fegel video, they've seen these things, you know, they've seen these records.
Okay.
And they have concerns. And one of the concerns I have is, is, you know, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk, is in the police records that I got, it showed the only phone call on police record or anything in the entire Warren police record is John Fegel making a phone call to dispatch that day. There are no, so there's no accountability of how all your names and social security numbers got entered into that database.
Can't answer that question.
So, there's no town employee, and I've gone to the police for this and saying, who, who provided these names to be put in there? And he just said, well, Ruth Davis typed them in. I said, well, no kidding. But there's no, there's no phone call, there's no text message, there's no nothing on how the, your names got in this list. So, so the reason why I'm asking the question is, there's another issue, because the police report, which is attached to, to these names of you, are also listed as witnesses for charging me with a felony. So, the issue, so then I went to the Warren selectmen and said, because the Warren selectmen have, have had this for, for six months now. So, I said to them...
Michael, in the statement you just made?
Yes.
We've never seen that. We've never even known that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, so that's part of my concern and that's why I wanted to reach out to you. So, so if you did not know your name was in there, then what town employee put your name in that database to char, to attempt to charge me with a felony?
We have no idea. Well, look, you, you want an honest answer, you got it.
Well, no, I do, that's why I asked the question.
We have no idea.
Because if you didn't have anything to do with it, then that, then obviously that proved...
I wasn't even at the site.
One, one Bob wasn't even there.
No, you were, no, you were there.
No, I wasn't there.
Michael, Michael, Bob was not there.
I was not there. I left. When all that went down, I was not there.
Melissa was on a work day.
Yes, Melissa was not there, correct, yeah.
Bob excused himself to go to the high school.
Right.
For my daughter.
And Kip, Priya.
Yeah.
Sue, myself, Kathy.
Right.
And Derek.
And I was in Sue's car because I was in...
No, I understand, I understand.
I was on the street and Kathy was behind us.
Right.
We never, we don't know what you're talking about. I can't, I was, I had...
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, you gotta go back to us, I guess, to the select people.
Well, that's the reason why I'm asking, right. So, I went to the selectmen and after I explained this, they said, this doesn't make any sense. So, now it's coming to the conclusion that somebody falsified these police records.
Okay, the only one that can falsify a police record is whom? Is whom?
Well, there's, well, there's two things.
None of us can.
Well, there's, well, the issue is it's either somebody calling in, providing information, or it has to do with the dispatcher, or it has to do with police employees. Because if you didn't authorize your name to be put here and Ruth Davis typed it, right, Ruth Davis isn't here anymore and I've already complained to the selectmen saying, I want somebody to call Ruth Davis and ask, where did she get your names from?
You went to the right place.
They did, they called Ruth and she says, I'm not talking about it, you know, piss off. So, so the police department is, has still not provided me any records on how your names got into this.
Okay, you've got our right here. We don't put our names into a police record.
Right.
It has, if it's on a form, we don't do that.
Right.
So, it came from the source that you got it from, which would be the police department. It's an issue between...
Right.
One, Michael Burrell, and two, the police and selectmen. We were present, we will not...
No, I understand, yeah.
You know that. So, and that was taken here.
Well, that was one, that was one of the questions that I sent Kathy. And it wasn't to, in my email to Kathy was not anything derogatory, I mean, it was just a simple question saying, did you know your name was in the police report? And if not, then that obviously means that somebody used your name without authorization, which isn't correct, which, not to say, isn't correct, which, which is unethical, because you didn't authorize it. And if you didn't authorize it, who should be held accountable for this issue? And that's what I was talking to the selectmen about and talking to town council about. I says, if they don't know their name is in here, which is, which I'm glad you just explained that to me, then the selectmen need to conduct an investigation into how this data got in here and how your names are used without your permission.
Okay.
But, but, but the issue is, I'm now getting different feedback from the selectmen saying, we're not interested, I think you should file a lawsuit, and then, so that's where this comes from.
I probably follow up with what the police, police, excuse me, the selectmen are saying, Mike, because we have no idea.
Right.
So, if they gave you a direction, that would be the next one and you take it up with the police department.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
I mean, seriously.
And then the only, the other thing was is, has this board or anyone from this board, has anyone filed a, a police report or complaint for this social security number issue to the police department or to the selectmen? Because, I asked the question because the selectmen started to tell me that you were talking to them, that you were gonna come on an agenda and file a complaint against your social security number being given out. And then two months would buy, when I talked to the selectmen, they said, oh, no, we changed that idea. You should have the planning board come to us to file the complaint against the chief giving out your social security number.
No. No.
So, so...
Answer is no.
Right. And I, and I, I understand that.
Probably.
Yeah. And I, and I understand that, but don't, now that you have this, if, would you be interested in filing a police report or complaint, or no?
No.
Or you just don't care?
No, we don't care. We, we run the board, we're all sitting here. And, you know, we know what goes on.
Yeah.
Everything went through the select people and no, none of us have any comments.
Okay.
Other than me saying no. Okay?
Right, okay, all right.
Okay?
All right, if you want, just to be courteous, if you want, I'll give you copies of this?
Mike, we don't want a thing in hand. Hang on to it.
Oh, okay. Well, you said you've never seen it, so I'd like to...
Mike, I've never seen video.
I don't want to announce the social security number.
We don't want anything to do with it. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, with that, Tom?
All right, yeah, I'm all set, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your time.
Oh, Tom?
I'm all set, just coming back, getting from there and...
Is he asleep in there?
Is that your jacket?
Oh, he's gonna sleep on, he's gonna sleep under the chair. You see, he's got a meeting tomorrow morning here. You gotta get involved with us, okay?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to, I'm more than happy to come as long as I know that I'm requested.
I appreciate the call, but they're all posted, it's every Monday night, okay?
Yeah, we're dealing with them every Monday.
We, we haven't missed a Monday, Tom.
And there's plenty of road issues. I mean, there's plenty of cuts in the roads for access and culverts and whatever, you know, that, I mean, we're looking for you to be a little tough on this and protect our roads.
To the point where you can't be.
Right, that's basically it.
That's the whole thing.
The roads have to be protected. And only you have that authorization. We don't.
If it can't be the way we would like, just say, look, my hands are tied and I can only do so much. That way the townspeople, and I will refer quickly. The other night, when Bobby, I'll say Bobby Bowden came up with that complaint and he showed us pictures of water and you had just left, I was with Ed Krakowitz, and you were driven by me coming down the road with the bucket holder and Ed said you were up there cleaning up. We can't, Bobby Bowden wants to file a complaint about water running across Little Rest Road and stuff. We're not there. It washes out what you've done over the years, something's gotta be addressed with it, that's all.
Yeah, and the issue with that, with this, with the storm's air, was that weather's wreck, weather's season on record.
Yeah.
And the ground's frozen.
And there's no trees in the back anymore.
Yeah. Everything, everything, I walked out there shortly after he met with me and the only drainage that's coming down there from the solar field is some of the drainage from the road.
Yeah.
There's a swale between the road and Little Rest Road that's carrying that water to the drainage. So, all the water that's coming through the wall would be coming through the wall regardless of if that solar field is there or not.
Right, and there's nothing you can do about that. That's what happens. That's why we address the water damage.
I just wanna add to that, we all talk about water runoff. And the water runoff, besides being water that comes down the road like that, everything is affected by the water tables. So, even if we can't visually see that the water's coming from there to here, doesn't mean why the water is, it's accumulating here.
Right.
Because the sum of everything that's around is making the water table go up. Now we get more water.
Right.
And that's, that's one of my concerns on Route 19 with Mike Sperra's property on that land. He's in a boat. He will get...
He's not there.
I know he's not there, but he made that garage, I remember.
Yep.
You know, when they do the construction and everything, the water table's gonna go up. Even the, Nick said, the engineer said, oh, but the water doesn't go that way. It's not about the water runoff, it's the water table's gonna come up.
Coming up underneath.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, like, I'll be more than happy to be here as long as I know that you want me to be here. That was the whole thing.
It's coming down to that point where you gotta be here because let's just say hypothetically up on Little Rest Road, okay? They're gonna put that road in that you have to make the swales wide on either side, hypothetically. We don't know if they ever knock that. Well, it's gonna change in design if they don't get and they apply for a Form B to put in a subdivision. That road's gonna be hardballing everything else down the road. So, as we're getting closer to closing with them, when they say we're gonna send the lot the first morning, we're gonna have a dozer dropped off and start dropping, what? They're gonna make a sand road, they're gonna make a gravel road to go from Little Rest Road up for the property to get into the field? Well, what do you want? What should be there to start What should be there to start that road? So when the dozer pushes back, is it gonna compact it down? Are you gonna have crushed stone? Are you gonna have sand and stone, a mix or whatever? So when that first truck goes in and comes out that night and it rains, what's gonna wash out in the morning when you get a call from five residents going, hey? So that's why we want that input and want you here. That's what it's all about, okay?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. It's, I just, was just under the understanding that there was a lot of talk
Oh, there was, because I'm not, we're not gonna listen to people complaining about the roads. Take it to the person who's in charge of roads.
That's exactly it.
And one party doesn't want the other party talking, well, we're not in the middle of that. That's not for us. And it was talk in the back. All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion, I adjourn.
Yeah?
I need these.
Oh.
Yep.
What is that?
The decision.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Tom. I'll go back. Did everybody have, you got this, we talked about it. Did everybody have their input on the decision process here?
Do you have any changes I needed?
We need the changes, Kathy needs them today.
Or ZPT.
Then you just hand them over and we'll, we'll address them.
My first thing, oh, no, this one was okay then.
See your, see your, Tom.
We're inconsistent with the hours of operation with ZPT.
I don't want any Saturdays.
Even on Reed Street? You can't, really not gonna do limit.
Even on Reed Street? I listen, I listen to the motorcade track all weekend.
I have a hose being built right before John.
It'll get done quicker if they're sure.
I don't wanna listen to construction vehicles on Saturday.
I think that's wrong.
I disagree, I think Little Rest, they've got a butters right there, I definitely see that, but this one, what is the, um, delivery of equipment to site from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Number seven on ZPT. Police officer on detail during the first two weeks of construction of the driveway and/or delivery of equipment to site.
We never did that. We've never done that.
No.
Site, the equipment can come in in the middle of the night.
The whole, the whole thing with this is, this is one of the first ones that is on a residential street in a residential area, okay? And with that.
That's not the first one.
With that, having an eighteen-wheeler show up, the dozers, excavators, and a whatever, whatever else. You have an officer there the first week so the machines can get in, they can cut their road in, they can get the eighteen-wheelers. Some of the stuff is gonna have to be offloaded pretty close on to Reed Street to get them inside. That eighteen-wheeler's not gonna have a pad. They're gonna have to put a pad down to get that eighteen-wheeler in to turn around to drop off heavy equipment and come out the first week. Once all that equipment is inside, you don't need a detail officer there for those four hours in the morning.
Okay.
Okay? The four hours in the morning, if he or she starts at either six or 6:30 to 10:30, 9:30 or 11:30, that's when your machines are gonna show up. The school buses are there, the oil trucks come in the morning, people are leaving to go to work, and all of a sudden you've got a truck that came up from the center of town and a truck that came off South, uh, South Street. And they're all getting onto Reed Street to take a right into nowhere because there's no place to go yet.
Yeah, okay.
That first week, when they, when they say, hey, we're gonna start today. We want a guy there for five days. After that, no detail because they, everybody can turn and get into the gate and it's open for work.
Just wanted to get established.
Exactly, established.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's the only reason for that.
Number fourteen, it says drip edge and interceptor tranches? I didn't think this project had those.
I don't know. You guys gotta talk about that.
No. This one doesn't. The only one that has drip edges is up on, um, Breezeland. Yeah, there's no drip edges and interceptors.
But something should be clear, cleaned and approved by the town license.
I had.
Basins?
Yeah, I had added that, um, all catch basins be physically inspected and cleaned every six months for the first five years and every year thereafter.
So you want the fourteen taken out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would rather have them physically inspected. In other words, someone there, not by video, not by, someone physically there and cleaned every six months for the first five years of project.
Now.
Do you have that written down on your?
I have it written down. Here on the ball.
Pass them all in.
Did you, did you guys get the draft conditions on solar project decisions? Draft conditions on the solar project?
What is it?
That Derek gave?
Yes.
Alright, with these coming up.
I want all of those in there, yeah.
Part of it, I haven't finished it.
Well, okay, this is something that should be added to all of them. Jeff brought it up about, uh, three weeks to a month ago, about what can be done and what should be done. And it's all contained in this playbook.
There is only one thing on number two that I wanna be sure of. Um, I might wanna add a little verbiage to it.
Ask the applicant.
So if I may, I'll read it as is. Prior to earth disturbing activities, the planning board's engineer or consultant shall inspect the installed erosion and sediment controls in the presence of the applicant or its contractor. The engineering consultant shall report its findings to the planning board. The applicant shall correct any deficiencies found. To that, I'd like to add, and then be re-inspected before construction commences.
That's number two.
And number two.
On Derek's draft.
I was talking about, I just said, did you?
On Derek's draft. Okay?
So I'd just like to make sure that that inspection that, that is alluded to in the beginning is done, if there's anything that needs to be corrected, before construction begins.
Yes.
Well said.
Any problems with that, Sue?
No. Seventeen?
Well, wait, Melissa?
No, I'm fine with that.
Do you have any problems with that?
No.
No, oh, yes, please add that on it, Bob.
If I may continue, Mr. Chairman, I have one other small thing. And I think it should be for all of ours unless there's a certain, special certain. circumstance, and I believe that vegetative growth should always be used inside defense on the solar field. Nothing else. Vegetative growth, I like the idea of clover and grass and things that can slow down and trap, collect water before it stops flowing off the site. In my opinion, anything we can do to keep water on the site versus going to these swales and basins is just going to help us overall. So I would like to make that just standard for us. Vegetative growth.
Comment from anyone?
What did they already, what did they say they were doing up there?
Who was they, Sue?
This one that we're signing off on.
I don't know.
Oh, Reed Street.
I think it was.
Yeah, maybe it is. I just think it should be standard on all of our sites. It's like, this is what you're gonna put inside things.
I mean, that's what we've always seen and that.
Yes. Do you, no, I think Derek can correct those. Breezeland's.
Oh, the trench system.
They're using the trench system.
We wanna stay open to that.
Yeah.
Well, even if they do the trench system, they can plant.
They still plant around them.
See, the idea, for example, when he mentioned the growth, is because when the water hits the ground, all the vegetation kinda like flattens it out. When there's no vegetation, water starts hitting the ground and erosion starts in. And then you see all this.
Channeling.
Channeling. So with vegetation, special vegetation, we have one step to protect the ground and prevent erosion from the, from day one. It's not that, it's not gonna, it's not gonna prevent at all, but it's much better than if nothing is there.
I'm very much in favor of the vegetation. I just think we have to be careful if the site is better served with.
Well, yeah, the thing is, is that we can, we can condition that to each project. I mean, but I think just as a standard, we should make sure on any site that this is in there if the site doesn't warrant some of that.
Look at it this way, they want the wood chips because they're gonna get the wood, they're gonna chip it and they're gonna just drop it there.
Right, right, yeah, that's easy.
They said to use the stump grinding, that will hold.
Correct, because of.
Well, it's, yeah, it's now.
What was the seventeen?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. Melissa, Brian, you had something to say.
Are there any areas where they could just, Kathy? Are there any areas where they could just let them reestablish? Like, like, I know on, like, on my property, if I clear an area, five years later, it's reestablished. Why does it all have to be, are there any areas you could just let them reestablish naturally and fill in? Or does it all have to be?
Inside the perimeter of their, of their property.
Right.
They have to keep the, the edges clear. And then they, we want them, as you just heard, to put grass in. Because that whole area has to absorb the water go down. What you're talking about is reestablishing the natural vegetative growth that was there.
Yeah, inside and outside, whatever.
That'll be on the outside. The inside, they wanna keep it down and brush. If we reestablish the natural growth, there's a, there's a chance that you could end up with fire. Okay? Just spontaneous fire due to a fire outside that burns inside.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what all the boundaries are and everything, but I'm just saying, that would be the ideal thing.
It would be. They don't like that, and the engineers will talk about it. Derek, you get a comment?
They, they propose to be grass because they wanna prevent the vegetation to grow up and make shadow and shade. Okay, there you go, that's the answer. So that's inside, inside their fence, everything is grass. Outside, we wanna remove natural vegetation.
Alright, that's.
Which is why our new bylaw has a hundred and fifty feet buffer.
Right.
To keep that natural outside of the fence line.
Okay, Sue? Seventeen, seventeen.
Seventeen.
I just said Senkara.
Yeah, you got the wrong one there.
Same on P D eight.
Someone got there.
Just at the bottom.
Anything else that needed to be added to this?
Um, Jack suggested to put this draft under the decision, put it, like, at the, at the end of seventeen, put it as special conditions. Like a hole, and then add those four.
Do you have a call for that, Derek? No, Bob?
No, sir.
No. Is that where you would put the vegetative growth too? Or that thing that you just added?
Yeah, that's the one.
That would be the end of there too?
Yes.
Yeah, and the physically cleaning, the catchations.
That's already there.
That's already.
This is kind of like the lifesaver. When I spoke with Jeff and other engineers, I said, well, we have all these projects and we, when we go and see middle construction, they just do something else.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they plan A and B and they do C and zero, and it's a mess.
That happened on Spring Street. It was, it was awful. Yeah.
I'm just trying to cover and save, you know, the town to prevent so that something goes really wrong.
So when do we vote on this, next Monday?
Yes. I'll finish up once you give me all your papers and you want the changes. I'll do all the changes, I'll send it to you. And so Monday I will have the final. So once I get everything, I'll hurry up and do it tomorrow, get it sent to you. If it's okay, then we'll have it, I'll have it ready for Monday night.
Next Monday night.
Yeah, yes. Phil, you wanted on number six, you wanted to add in no overnight parking.
Alright, the reason for that is.
Stamping?
Well, what's, what's happened, you get a lot of migrant, and I'm using the term migrant, meaning not local workers, okay? People brought in from New York because a lot of these places in New York affiliated and down the South Shore. You get twenty guys showing up and they're working like dogs. They're not driving three hours back home. They're not driving back up to New York, okay? What's been happening locally, well, throughout the state is, the gates locked at the end of the workday and five guys are sleeping in a tent or they got three different tents on the barnfire going on site because they already got porta, porta parties on site. So they become residents for the month or for the lifetime of the project being built.
They're locked inside.
They're inside. Alright, so with that, everybody has to be outside. And you're gonna find that the wildlife management areas around here become campgrounds.
They, um, up at Maine, they were doing work on the, um, high tensions line with everything. And they do, they come in, they brought in campers and they have an area where these guys are all basically living for now.
Just like the log and.
Yeah, there's a, there's a friend of mine in town that he does that and he goes all week and sleeps on the, wherever they're cutting, he sleeps there all week and then comes back for the weekend with his family.
Yep, but that would protect the property's block.
Uh, just before we go, I, I'd really like to just get the board's word on finalizing working hours on Reed Street. I, I.
I think Saturdays is wrong because with construction, if you limit, take away Saturday, give it to noon time or whatever, but if you take away Saturdays in construction business, you need to work when the weather is good. I don't care what kind of construction. There's a house being built right in front of my house. I hear it at seven o'clock.
I work construction in all, all weather flights.
I hear it at seven o'clock in the morning and I'm not complaining. That's just the way the world is.
So are we seven to noon on Saturday? Is that what?
Yes.
Because, because the other, the other hand of that is, just so you can have both sides of construction workers.
See, I don't care if it's up to five.
When I work, it took us an hour to roll out and an hour to roll up. So what are you gonna get accomplished in two hours? You get nothing accomplished on site in a four-hour day.
Let them, I would let.
And why have we decided it's seven to seven on workdays? Why a twelve-hour day?
We have never decided on that.
That's in here.
That's all the old ones were, how would you always have? Because the flight hours.
In the past, we have, and then in the past, most of the solar fields aren't the golf course.
Yeah.
The only one that was in a residential area, yet it was at the end of the road on a person's own property, okay? And they went by the person's house and he didn't mind that, was Spring Street. The other ones were not in residential areas, the accesses and the egresses.
Weren't in between houses.
Were not, exactly. So now, all these now are between houses and on scenic roads, home roads, Saturday roads, softball games, soccer games, trash pickup, oil deliveries. And you're gonna have the butters sit out on a Saturday night, one in barnfire, the kids are camping, or weekday night, excuse me. At five thirty, you come home from work and you got a dozer going behind your house for another two and a half hours. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the people. My answer is no, seven to five.
Five, okay.
That's what I had, right?
Continuing.
No, 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 that is my decision, you figure it out.
How long is that project supposed to last?
It's a couple of months.
Couple of months? That's, I mean, if it's only a couple of months, just let them get it done.
That's my theory. Let them finish it, get out of there.
Exactly.
Let them, you know, have their peace.
That's up to the board, I'm sticking with seven to five.
Plus they're limited on what kind of year they need to do it because.
Can we vote?
Yeah, you can, we can vote. And then, excuse me, my other is nothing on Saturdays, the residential areas, they have the right to do their own lawn mowing and everything.
Well, they can mow their lawns, but they can listen to the, it's not that long a period of time. You live, you don't have, you have to go by weather.
Do you vote? Take the input, take a vote.
You know, we. I make a motion that, um, Mr. Chairman, just so we can get out of here and see where it goes on the table. I make a motion that we allow the construction on Reed Street for the ZPT solar energy, um, facility to put up there to be Monday through Friday, seven to five, no work on weekends.
Motion made seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That sucks.
Thank you for being honest, though!
Hey, Sue, Sue, and if I may, you've always been involved with construction. That's fine.
She has too.
That's fine, both of you, and I'm not seeing it.
Yes.
I live on this.
I know you do. The biggest push is, we gotta think of the people now.
But how many people are affected by the one I made?
Enough that the vote was in favor of seven to five.
Then they showed up here to voice their concerns over the others.
Nobody showed up.
By the way, I'm in construction too.
Yeah.
I'm also in sports, in soccer. A lot of people come into town on Saturdays.
Saturdays, the roads are full of people.
Players, family come into town.
Bike races in the summertime, all that stuff.
So it's, I, I, that's why I voted, no Saturdays.
Okay, it's done, it's done.
Yep, anything else we wanna discuss, Kathy on that?
I'll use the next one, I'm sure.
Do we have anything else, Kathy, on those?
Well, this one is good, but, um, Sincafra, we need to get this going, this has gotta end.
What, the, uh, decision?
Little Rest.
Yeah.
Little Rest.
This one, I agree on the hours, it's between two houses and no Saturdays.
Well, yeah.
I completely agree on this one.
I think I'm not sure I'm voting in favor of it.
It, it's not whether we're voting in favor, we still have to cover decisions. You know, and then at the end, we have.
I definitely think it should be, you know, the shortest hours possible during the work week and no, no weekends at all.
I agree with that on this.
Seconded, third or fourth.
Now, remember, Carter wrote decisions, he wrote what the company or the applicant feels is, uh, and the biggest, the biggest thing we, we, that was brought up and I brought up to the board was reasonable, okay? If it's reasonable, it's defensible. Seven to five during the week is reasonable and defensible.
Yeah.
Anything after, oh, just up right for a minute, anything after is now putting health, welfare and safety, health and welfare on the, on the butters, okay? They're totally against this, we don't even know if it's gonna pass yet or not, yet in taking into consideration both sides of that road. When I asked the question, have you exhausted all egresses to the property? From the top end, which would be the north end, coming through the power company's property and taking out any other, they said yes. Well, now we're going between two people's homes. Health and welfare, we're right there, just went out the window as far as I'm concerned. We weren't, we're not considering that at all, and you won either. So, having a guy drive up and down and then on a Saturday, it, it's, it's a tough one. Excuse me, it's an easy one to consider, wait.
Guy with a pickup with no muffler.
Where they're gonna have, all we have to do is the driveway permit, that's going between two people's houses, right? Brad Road somewhere?
No, that's Little Rest Room.
No, 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 no.
Oh, oh, excuse me.
The one for the Westbrook Field.
In Brad Road that was going into Westbrook Field, that's Brad Road.
Yeah, we only have to do the turn.
The entrance, exactly, turn us through that, yes, cause that's on this guy's property.
But also, the houses, the houses on Little Rest, they've already been through construction in back of their house because it's already a solar farm out there.
There's already four locations of solar panels up there.
And another one gonna be brought up across.
Another?
Yeah, there's gonna be a fifth and a sixth.
Brian, what do you got?
And a seventh.
I know you guys already took a vote, but I, I've been on cultural for thirty years and I remember for at least twenty years, that town dump, Bejo's Big Machine, okay, would echo, I mean, it would, it would wake me up on a Saturday morning with a hangover, you know what I'm saying? And.
The car accident.
It was nasty, yeah, yeah, I mean, it was loud and it was nasty.
Bob Downing ran it.
Okay, but I mean, that's what I had to deal with for like twenty years, I'm just saying, you know, let them do their thing, get out of here, but, so, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that would, you know, if it ain't one thing, it's another thing, you know, it's a lawnmower, leaf blower, something, you know?
Yeah.
Chain saw.
No, he worked.
Alda, can you wait till eight o'clock?
Yeah. Alright, anything else on those, what else do we need for Sincafra that, are there any inputs from anybody? Did it, reviewing it, do we agree with what we have for Sincafra at this time? Also.
Has that been included in Sincafra's decision?
It will be.
Yes, okay, then I'm.
The other thing also, again, on Sincafra that we talked about on Reed, is the PO being on site the first week of construction. The police officer being on site the morning that eighteen-wheeler comes down and they're gonna dump gravel or whatever it is to make that road in between the homes going up, the police officer being on site.
Detail officers, and that other towns do that.
Believe it or not, it, it, some of them don't.
Yeah, more times than not, you don't see a cop around.
Because, I'll tell you what, when do we know that the logging company's going up there to three of these places? Now, Lavec shows up usually on Sundays with his eighteen-wheeler. He'll off, he'll offload the Cottifella, he'll offload his chippers, the commercial chipper, the whole eighteen-wheeler body. Then he offloads all his skidders on Sunday afternoons. And then Monday morning at six o'clock, believe me, on Coy Hill, six o'clock, when that chipper starts, would've knocked you out of bed. If it was at the dump, with a hangover and all, you'd be sitting up and your hair'd be going like this because that chipper starts and they take forty and fifty-foot trees, four or five at a time, and just blow it in the back of the truck or on the ground, woo, six o'clock. But it's not gonna happen and we don't know, we have no idea when they're gonna send in their, their land clearance because they don't have to.
True. They don't have to tell us. They're not highly traveled roads, I mean, Little Rest isn't a highly traveled road.
No, it's a highly congested road with everybody coming.
Still got school buses and oil delivery trucks and all that stuff.
The school bus goes into Brimfield to turn around.
Yeah.
It has to turn around. And then you've got people coming from Brimfield back up down Little Rest Road to go down to get, go into Palmer or to go into Warren and out through nine. That whole end of Little Rest and Brimfield Road is all traveled back this way.
Brimfield Road is, Little Rest not going.
No, Little Rest.
Little Rest.
Yeah, the people that live in Brimfield, on those ten houses in, I know they do.
Yeah.
They all come back up Little Rest, go down by the golf course.
Can you guys do something about that train that comes through at, what is it, fucking one?
Yeah.
I hear that on the other side of the mall.
I do too.
But, you know, anything else for Sincafra? Cause, uh, Carter, he's been, uh, he wants to be here and wants to be able to see him and we told him, well, guess what? We'll get him to you.
I was fine on everything else.
Okay, Kathy? No typos?
No typos.
No typos.
Is that alright, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
No extras?
No.
Unless, Kathy?
There's a date, there's a date's missing, but.
Yes, but I don't know when we wanna dis.
Unless you can think of something. Is that?
Um, the only thing is, I'm gonna add those special conditions.
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna add the, uh, no overnights. I'm gonna add that police officer on this tomorrow.
Opening morning.
To add a little more, it's kinda there, but I'll add the.
Were there any complaints of people staying overnight on any of the other facilities that they get?
In here?
Yeah.
None because they were all within sight of houses being able to see them, okay? The golf course was.
Reed Street, the primary location is just.
Oh, yeah.
Well, when do you get to that Coy Hill?
Same thing.
What, smoke signals?
Yeah, a bonfire there, you never see it.
And, you know, it's just to protect the area, Sue, okay? And, and because it's happened in other towns and the state has, uh, had problems.
Yeah, we haven't closed it, so that's what, what we have to discuss, when, are we gonna close it and?
I, on Sincafra, do you wish to close it at this time or let these get typed up and then review it and then close it at that time?
I'd rather close it at that time.
At what time?
When, when we have it all typed up.
When it's all finalized.
So when do you want to have it ready, Sue?
We technically close before.
We can close it. Cause then even if. We can close it because they can still make changes.
This back, oh, yeah.
If we don't.
Put your name on it.
We can close it and then even if it changes, we can put changes in.
Yeah, we can, once we close it, no one else has any.
Right, exactly, right.
We still have authority to change.
So, would you like to close it at this time?
I'll lower the, the board.
Yeah, I make a motion to close Sincafra.
Seconded.
Seconded. Motion made seconded, to close Sincafra, that means no more input, we decided on what we wanna put down there, it gets typed up. Okay, made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, Kathy, is that alright to do?
Yep. Sue made the motion, Melissa seconded.
Anything else, Kathy?
So, um, do you want me to have this decision ready?
Kathy, when can you have it ready, is required?
Well, if it's all set, just those few little things I have to add, I can have it done this week if you want to sign it.
Next Monday?
Monday. I have, um, decision for Reed Street at seven-thirty, Coy Hill at eight. But, um, decision not gonna take long.
That's right, it takes about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, so you wanna do them right after?
The Coy Hill one, which is, uh, ZPT. We're all set with that?
Um, no, we're not closing that one, we're just hearing them again, that's a continuance.
Okay, yeah, no, 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 alright.
Remember we continued that one because we weren't sure what we were gonna do from last week.
Okay, can you have that, if you can have this done, have it done for Monday night?
I'll put them, I'll put them at seven forty-five.
Sure, that's fine.
What time is the other one, um, that one closed?
Get a nice fire for new.
Reed Street, that's why we are signing it, that's why I made it.
You think it?
Cause that is, has to be signed. Okay.
Alright. Is that alright? Is that alright?
Yeah, I'll have it.
Don't wait that time.
Oh, they tried to close it the week before.
Yes, they did, yeah, they did. Okay, alright, we're all set, alright.
Yeah, we're just gonna make a decision at Coy Hill, we'll probably continue this.
Yeah.
This book is looking pretty bad, you know?
Seems like all the blogs, square blogs on that calendar to the right are vacant, not even a honeydew list on there, but the Mondays is.
You're like a football.
Everyone doesn't know that Monday is moved.
Yeah, I can't.
Except for you, that's fine, because we have four, so everyone knows that, the fifteenth, the meeting on the fifteenth has been moved to the seventeen.
Yeah. That's the public meeting?
Yes, downstairs. That'll be in, yes.
Okay, we all set?[1784.88]